Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Gelderlos.
Here.
America.
Here.
Northup.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Trust.
Here.
VanderWaal.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, I don't believe that our scheduled pastor is here for the invocation tonight, so I'll give the invocation. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to join me. And we're going to follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. God, thank you for keeping us safe today. Thank you for such a beautiful fall day. We love the change in seasons, and you're a God of such great variety. We thank you that you see things from the very beginning to the very end. And I ask you to bless the people who volunteer and work for the city of Granville. And I pray that you will let them know how much they're appreciated and valued. And tonight, we have a big decision. And we pray for wisdom, because you've said that if we need wisdom, all we do is ask, and we believe that we receive that. So help us to do what is in the very, very best interest of the city in all things, but especially tonight, as we look at selecting a new city manager. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, please say no. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, September 26th. Had a chance to take a look at those. Is there any additions or corrections anybody wants to make, or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
It's like a motion and support. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yeah. Any opposition, please say no. Great. Ken, substantial amount of bills tonight, about $636,000. Anything you want to point out on those?
Yeah, I've got several to highlight tonight, Mr. Mayor. Better than half of that total falls simply under the monthly insurance premiums for the full-time city employees, and also the water bill for the city from the city of Wyoming. That's an August bill, and it's the highest of the summer. So those two total about $348,000 of the little over $600,000 total. On other bills besides those large ones, large monthly ones, wanted to indicate on page one and four, the split bill between assessing and DPW for the wide-format copier that was approved by council on July 25th. That's been received, and the invoice is up for payment tonight. A couple of bills on page two. The Kent County Treasurer total there is for six months of police dispatch from July through the end of the year this year. So you only see that pop up a couple times a year, but they're providing full dispatch services for the police department, and so that's reflected in the $82,000 total. If I remember right, our fire dispatch bill follows a little shortly after this one. They don't come together, so you'll see that on the future bills list. The second one on that page was half of the executive search costs from the MML. And then there's two more bills to highlight on page four. Council approved on August 22, the painting of the Number 10 school in Heritage Park, and that invoice for $5,400 is included, as well as the first of what will be several progress payments related to the replacement of HVAC controls in the police department. The bill tonight from Control Logic was for $11,000, and that's only about 10% of the total that we'll see. So there may be questions, and if so, we'd be happy to try to answer those for council.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Ken. Questions for Ken about any of the bills? No. Is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $636,409.61?
Support.
Motion and support. Any other discussion, final questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman America.
Yes.
Northup.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Trust.
Yes.
VanderWaal.
Yes.
elderslos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Now, it's time for my favorite time of our meeting, that's public comment, and I'm looking forward to a presentation by Deputy Chief Renee Veldman. Renee, welcome.
I didn't do it. Chief. FBI.
Can you take off the... What was that? Oh, I know.
Presentation. So it's a presentation, so you can't see the notes.
I don't have it. Sorry about that. Little technical difficulties. So thank you for allowing me to come in and speak to you all about my adventure at the National Academy. So my adventure began really in March, when I received my phone call that I was accepted. It's a pretty stringent process to even apply for the National Academy, and those applications are gone by through the FBI, and then they go ahead and select people from around the world to attend this academy. It's very prestigious and hard to get into. Some of my classmates waited for seven to eight years to even attend. Because Granville had never sent anyone before, I was lucky enough to only wait a few months. So I was really excited about that, not quite prepared, because one of the requirements was that you had to run a mile timed, which I was not a runner then. I'm becoming more of a runner and kind of enjoying it, actually. So I did my timed run and was told, okay, you're in. So I quickly prepared to get ready to leave, and this is my journey. So let me walk you through it. It'll just give you a little glimpse of some of the things that we did while I was there, and hopefully I can explain the importance of continuing this type of professional development with all of our department members. So on July 9, I packed my car up with everything that I thought I might need for the next 10 weeks, because I really didn't know exactly what to expect. So I drove 11 hours to Quantico. Upon my arrival, I came to this building and thought, oh, my goodness, what did I get into? It was pretty daunting. It's a large building. I actually arrived at night, so I had more of these types of views, which I thought, okay, this won't be so bad. The little tunnels that you see there that are enclosed, those are affectionately termed as the habit trails, and you can walk through those from building to building, because there's multiple buildings. And that way, you can stay out of the weather, or you can go at night and feel safe that you're still traveling to a different building. So the building on the left is the library, and the building on the right is part of the dorms where my classmates were. So when I checked in, I was told that I was going to be in room 211, which really doesn't mean much, but in that room, we all had roommates. So think back to the last time you had a roommate, and you're like, oh, jeez. Again, what did I get myself into, right? So every room has a small armoire, which you get exactly half of. So that's my half, and I had the upper drawer of that, and then I had a twin-sized bed, extra long, of course. I had a desk, and then there was a bathroom. So there's two people in each room, and it's connected to a suite, so there's two people in the next... So four of us ladies shared a bathroom, which really wasn't bad at all. So this is what I called home for the next 10 weeks. What I found I needed most were these items: your lanyard, which had your identification. You were required to carry that around all of the time. And of course, the important two keys behind that are your room key and your cafeteria key to actually be able to be served. The next item was backpack for all of my classes and traveling from the dorms over to all of the classrooms. And of course, this was key, and that's the cafeteria schedule, because none of us could ever remember what time dinner ended or began. So the instructors were key. There was nothing better than these instructors. They're internationally known. Some of them have advanced degrees. One of the instructors, the one on the far left, she's actually from this area, from Cascade, right here in Kent County. She's amazing. All of them are nothing short of amazing. They make you grow. They make you reach down deep inside and pull out whatever it is you have in there. I can't begin to express how critical it was that these instructors took an interest in each and every one of us. So the classes were mainly focused on advanced leadership and executive management, as well as comprehensive health and intense physical fitness. The instructors acted as excellent facilitators in our classes. The instructor would begin a topic, and most often, all of the students in that class would kind of take over the conversation, and we would talk about how different departments would handle different situations. And that's really where we all began to learn quite a bit. One of the other things that we did in one of our other classes was something called a crucible, and just by the mere definition, which is a situation of severe trial leading to the creation of something new. So what was explained to us when we began that class is that we would have to present on something that was meaningful to us, something that obviously was difficult, that we went through, that turned us into the leaders that we've all become. All of us in the class shared very personal, private, in-depth things that made each and every one of the students that were there listening reflect back on ourselves to make ourselves be better leaders, not to forget certain things, to remember, to watch after somebody if they've been through a certain situation, situations that maybe you didn't ever even consider. But throughout that class, we were forced, by listening, to learn those ugly, nasty things that maybe some of us don't even consider while we're being leaders of our departments and our agencies. These are some of our other instructors. Another nice thing about all of the instructors is that they'll happily share all of the resources that they have. All of the PowerPoints that they developed through our classes, they shared with each and every one of us, and we could take them and do what we wanted to with them. We could store them away for future use, store them away to reflect back, thinking, hey, we covered that in class, let me look it up, and we can just go to the PowerPoints or any of the resources that were used. The real learning, like I said earlier, was from each other. 235 students, students who became friends. That was my roommate, down in the bottom corner, just from Pennsylvania. These friends are also contacts. They're continual resources, something that can never be changed because of our friendship, because of the experience that we went through together. Even now, I'm understanding what this is all about, because as soon as I got back to work, the emails began to come in from all of my classmates, asking, hey, do you have wording on a particular policy? What are you guys doing for recruiting and retention? Does somebody have the name of a motivational speaker? I need one for my guys at work. Exchanging ideas about chaplain programs and building resilience, health and wellness programs. These are all ideas that we can exchange amongst our friends. Just a few things to name. We also had international friends. There were 21 countries that were represented when we went through our class: Canada, Albania, Indonesia. We had Korea there, Costa Rica. My suite mate was from Costa Rica. Peru, Jordan, Greece, France, Africa, Taiwan, just to name a few. So we also talked about physical fitness. Resiliency in law enforcement is critical when it comes to health and wellness. An important element of resiliency for law enforcement is fitness. By building physical health, you naturally build your mental health, all of which increases resiliency. So there, at the academy, they taught us in safe ways, pointing out how to protect ourselves from injuries and how to complete some of these tasks that we were faced with. They focused on stretching, strength, perseverance, and not giving up, and most importantly, working together as a team. Some of the other things that we did as a group, we pushed sleds, worked with kettlebells, worked on assault bikes. All of these things are stress reliefs. Taking care of yourself, health and wellness, those are the important things that a lot of our instructors focused on. They reminded us that we had to put on our oxygen masks before we can actually help others. And serving others is what we do. That's our passion. That's what we care to do. That's what we signed up to do. But before we can do that efficiently and effectively, we have to take care of ourselves. And this is a really good way to do it: being your best self. Resiliency is key in our field today. Endurance, another thing that's key. So every Wednesday, we would do weekly challenges. These challenges were just that, challenges, especially for someone older. We won't really talk about age, but older. There was a lot that went into this, and nobody was barking in your face or ordering you to do anything. They just simply wanted you to do your best. But the key was, was that the younger people were looking at us, saying, well, if they can do it, we can certainly do it. And we were thinking the same thing. Well, there's no way I can let this younger guy show me off and me not do it as well. So all of these challenges were preparing us for what was called the Yellow Brick Road. And the Yellow Brick Road is basically our reward for completing all of the challenges. And what it is, is it's a 6.1-mile obstacle course through the woods that was built by the Navy SEALs for the Marines to train on. So just that should tell you, it wasn't easy, but it was fun to do it. It was challenging, and it really taught us all a lot about ourself and about how we could effectively work together as a team. Sometimes those teams were our own chosen small groups. Sometimes those teams were our larger groups, our sections. There were five sections. The picture off to the far right is the section that I was in, Section 5, and this is our entire session, Session 283, 235 students. The nice thing is, is that it's not just our session that I've now become a part of, it's any past NA graduate, because all we have to do is mention that we're a graduate of the NA, and you'll be surprised at how quick someone will help you. That ties back into what meaning that might have for Granville. So when in need for things, let's say a case would take us out of state or out of the country, all I have to do is reach out to all of those states that may be impacted with who we might be looking for, the information that I might need, and those people will gladly reach out and let me know how they can help. So this group was meaningful to me, because all of those people, the five of us, were from Michigan. I was the only one from the western side, and the rest of them were from Lansing over to the east. This was affectionately the GOAT group, so it was anyone over the age of 50, which really kind of surprised me, because if you look at that group, it's a larger group than you would think. There's a lot of wisdom in that group and a lot of fun, even though we were over the age of 50. We still had a lot of fun. And this is the group that I got closest with: Mississippi, Louisiana, and South Carolina. Fewer than 1% of law enforcement executives have the opportunity to attend the FBI National Academy, and it's truly my honor to have done that for Granville. Succession planning, as you know, is key. It's a key element to any organization. I'd like to thank you all for continually supporting our department in the efforts toward professional development, and I'd propose that we continue sending our command staff to programs such as this. Each class that attends the NA will develop their own contacts and different educational pieces, depending on the selection of classes that they take. The classes that I took made me stretch. They took me out of my comfort zone, but they provided for both personal and professional growth, growth that I can bring back and have brought back to our community. I look forward to applying those lessons that I've learned to better serve our community in creative and innovative ways. Does anyone have any questions?
I've just got a comment, and then I do have a question.
Okay.
Comment first. Thank you so much for putting yourself on the line and under a very stressful situation, being gone from home for 10 weeks. So thank you. I mean, this is a tremendous benefit to the city of Granville as well. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Second question. We've talked about a series of videos about FBI agents. What do you think? Is that as interesting and exciting, and would you recommend that as a career for people?
I would definitely recommend that. It's very similar to being a police officer in a local agency. So being an FBI agent, per se, they have different responsibilities, because it's on a federal level versus a local level. But it does all tie back to Granville and any other local agency, because we all work together. It's all law enforcement.
This is a little bit of clarification to videos. My family and I have watched a series of like 51-hour videos about cases the FBI has worked on. It's fascinating. We're round two, watching them again, so I don't know if it's true or not, but it looks very exciting. Anyway.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah, I just wondered, the daily structure, the class structure, so what was that like? And then did you have time to kind of explore while you were there as well?
So the daily structure, it was very structured. It's just like going to college. So you got up in the morning, and then you had your first couple of classes, then you had an hour for lunch, and then you had your next couple of classes, and then if you had homework, then you had homework. If you didn't, you didn't. It just happened that all of my classes had homework. So I spent a lot of time studying. I did also have that opportunity to explore a little bit. So we went to Washington, DC. We went... We did some fun things, too. We went to a baseball game, went out to eat, because you get tired of cafeteria food. So we did that, too. It was fun. Thank you. Anyone else?
That was my question. How was the food?
The food actually wasn't bad at all in the cafeteria, but you just kind of got tired of eating cafeteria food all of the time. So I did things in my room. I don't know if you noticed, I brought a small refrigerator, so I went and did some grocery shopping and had a few things in the room, so that, you know, if I didn't want to go to breakfast, I could just grab a yogurt or something like that. So, yeah. Anything else? I know, right? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, congratulations. What an honor to be selected for something like this. And thank you again, as the mayor said, for representing our community so well. My question is, so along with the homework and the classes and stuff, were there particular projects that you worked on, or deliverables, or things that you had to turn in or present? Problems that you worked on, simulations, things like that? What was the content?
Yep. So each class had its own assignments. I had to read two books, two different books, and write reflective papers on them. Some of the other things that we did was requirements, where we visited not only the Holocaust Museum, but the African-American Museum, and we wrote a reflective paper on those things and tied those things back into management and leadership and how that all worked together. I also had to write one of my other requirements for my... One of my classes was writing about an at-risk employee and telling the story of that. Another one, I talked about the crucible, so that was a pretty big assignment for that particular one. There were other fun things that we did. One of my classes were showing us different things for health and wellness, and so we experienced meditation, some yoga. That was kind of fun. With that particular class, we had to... We had little tiny, small assignments that didn't really take long, but then we would have to reflect upon it and do like journal entering. So everything was through what was called Blackboard, so it was like an app that you just log into and you submit all of your work, but all of your assignments were on there. So there was quite a bit of assignments and reflective work. I also took a public speaking class, so that was a lot, because, you know, you were told, okay, so you have a persuasive speech you have to prepare. So prepare the speech. Some required PowerPoints, some didn't. But then, you know, you'd write your speech and then practice and then present it. So the classes I took happened to have a lot of requirements with a lot of work, but it was good. It was really good. And the group that I hung out with a lot, we were all very conscientious of our schoolwork. All of us knew that we were there for a reason. We weren't there just to play or, you know, visit. We were there to focus on the studies and what we could learn and what we could get from each other. So that's what we did.
Great. Yeah, sounds good. Thanks for your presentation. Appreciate it, seeing all the pictures, too.
You're welcome.
Makes it a little bit more real to be able to see.
Could you pick what classes you wanted, or was it, these are the classes you're taking?
So they gave you a list of classes, and you were allowed to select the classes that you wanted. I purposefully chose those that took me out of my comfort zone, and I knew they would, which was a very uncomfortable feeling when I first got there. But they did make me grow, and it was worth going through. Yes. There was a variety of different selections. There was a negotiator class that all of my friends all were in, and they were like, you should get this class. And although I really would have liked that, I have a lot of training already in negotiations, and so I felt that I was there for a purpose. I was there to grow, to learn, to learn things that I'd I felt that I was there for a purpose. I was there to grow, to learn, to learn things that I'd, I wasn't already familiar with. So that's what I did. Conscious choice.
Deputy Chief, I don't have any que- questions. I just want to thank you for your presentation and for, uh, for attending the National Academy and let you know how proud the council is of you, and I'm sure this will pay off benefits for Granville in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Still under public comment. Anybody here like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name and your address and let us know what you're thinking about tonight. And I see that Marcy has put our public comment guidelines up on the screen, so.
Hello, my name is Chev Root. I live on thirty-seven oh six Navajo Street, which is next door to Granville South Elementary. And across the street from my house is an old tennis court that I think there's a bench in front of it that was originally sponsored by the J.C.'s. And there's conversation going on about replacing the tennis court with horseshoe pits. And I would like to just share my opinion that I think that's a bad idea. Those tennis courts are highly, or that one tennis court is very much used by the immediate, community around it. Uh, it's used for tennis. It's used for, uh, pickleball pretty heavily. It's used every single day. I see the people out there playing for hours and hours every day. My kids also use that court. And kids from the, uh, the elementary school also use that court from time to time and in various different ways. And I just wanted to express my interest in keeping that court as a tennis court. Uh, and if anything, I'd like the city actually maintain that court a little more than what they do. Um, I say that because I know that the primary keepers of that court are in this room. And they're all the neighbors of that court, myself. You know, and, you know, the various neighbors out working on that court on a regular basis. And there's really, outside of mowing the lawn, the upkeep is actually rather poor, um, outside of the, the community interaction. But I would really like to not see that turn into horseshoes, uh. On the contrary, horseshoes in that community, I don't know anybody in the community that plays horseshoes directly. I mean, you know, twenty years ago, I used to play horseshoes with my parents when we'd go camping. But outside of that, I just can't see the community embracing that in that immediate spot.
Well, you've, you've come to the right spot because maybe you can give us.
Well, I'm just wondering where, where we heard that horseshoes was coming in.
Through, through the grapevine. I've heard it fr- from the, from the neighbors.
Getting rid of horseshoe pits.
Yeah. So we do have a plan.
What I heard was the horseshoes are coming out of Wedgewood, and there's conversations being had about moving them to a new location.
Have we finalized plans for that area? I, I know we have somebody from Park and Rec here too, so.
Well, I mean, Council Mills, we budgeted money to increase our pickleball presence in Granville and make that, um, wide, more widely available. I, I have to defer to Josh, I think, as Park and Rec Board. I think they've had some recent conversations. Initially, the plan was, um, to take some of the horseshoe courts out of Wedgewood and convert, convert those to pickleball. And then, um, I think there's been subsequent conversation about the horseshoes potentially moving from Wedgewood so there can be more pickleball courts at Wedgewood in a single location. But I, I don't know the details there. Maybe.
Yeah, that's basically the, the recent conversation was, there is actually a Granville Horseshoe Club that does still exist and does still utilize the, the horseshoe pits over at Wedgewood from about May to August or something like that. But, um, we did find them and they are still interested in, in being active. And that was kind of the latest discussion was, well, we've been trying to figure out where we can put more pickleball courts because everybody in town wants more pickleball courts. So originally we were thinking, you know, we would suggest taking some of the pits out at Wedgewood and making those pickleball courts and then leaving some horseshoe pits there. More recently, uh, an idea was thrown out there that, well, we've got these courts over at South and really we could only get maybe one, maybe two. The property is kind of in odd shape to really get more than maybe two pickleball courts there. Um, maybe we just move the horseshoe pits from Wedgewood over there and then we can do six pickleball courts at Wedgewood. And then we'd have eight courts over there to be able to do tournaments and things like that, because there's a lot of interest in pickleball, so. That was kind of the initial conversation. Uh, there's nothing final yet. It's just an idea that's been thrown out there and it should probably be a, a cost savings overall if we put, because there'd be a lot that needs to go into maintaining or updating or replacing courts over at South there. Because they are in not great shape. They haven't really been maintained. They've been there since the sixties. And, uh, that was kind of the, the latest idea was maybe move horseshoes over there and then we can do.
But you're still on.
I gotta say, I'm surprised to hear this because I was at a meeting with Charlie, uh, with, and the chairman of the Park and Rec Board, um, and the horseshoe people over there at the horseshoe pits, what, a month ago or less than that? Um, and the hor- they were all very pleased with the plan to reduce the horseshoe presence there in favor of adding the pickleball courts, what we're gonna put four there, I think, right? Um, and we have plenty of horseshoe pits there right now for their needs.
Right. Those would come out and those would be, become pickleball courts also.
No, well, they would be right there, wouldn't they, Charlie?
There was gonna be four pickleball courts at the, the horseshoe, it was now four, five, four, possibly five horseshoe pits.
Exactly.
And then there has been some other conversation about, you know, may, why don't we move, as Josh said, just a thought process, put the horseshoe pits all over there. And this way you have six grander pits or horseshoe, not pickleball courts. The other two, that way you could hold tournaments, everybody's all together if you want to. There, there was just, it was just a thought. Nothing has been done on paper.
Not a good thought, in my opinion. I'll express it right now.
Obviously, we're looking for input from people in the community and that was maybe why you heard about it in the neighborhood because I think, uh, I don't know if Kim went around or somebody went and knocked on some doors to, somebody had, had horseshoe pits in their backyard.
Somebody measure up, was measuring up around the court.
Okay.
Right here, they, they taped office space.
Oh, I thought somebody went and knocked on some doors or something like that over there too, to talk to some people.
I lived right next door.
It's just an idea at this point.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm gonna have to interrupt this. Usually we don't do back and forth during public comment, but I do think you came at the right time and you've got the right people sitting around here. Because, you know, we've got people from Park and Rec and people who've met with the horseshoe people. And, uh, so I'm sure that the folks from Park and Rec will bring your comment back to the Park and Rec Board, but it sounds like nothing is set in stone yet.
No, we're just talking about ideas at this point.
All right, good. Appreciate your comments.
Really appreciate all of your input or suggestions.
Yeah. If anybody else wants to make a comment about that, come on up to the podium and let us know what you're thinking about.
These courts are in my backyard. The fence goes across my yard, and I have no problem with that.
I'm sorry, could you give your name and address for Marcy? Thanks.
Mike Waslick. And under thirty-seven ten Cheyenne. Okay. Alright, so, I mean, I've been there thirty years. Okay? And I was there over the past six to ten years. Every year I clean this tennis court. The city rarely sends anybody out. The lawn crew that does the school does east of the tennis courts. There's probably about a twenty-foot gap between the fence and homes on the west side. And myself and my neighbor behind me here take care of that, because whoever does the school doesn't go up there. So I put a lot of time into those courts. I got grandkids that are playing on them. My kids played on them. I see a ton of kids coming. They learn to ride the bikes there. They go there to run off steam. Parents love to take their kids up there because they can just run, you know? I snow blow from, from my neighborhood, from Cheyenne, through my backyard, across those tennis courts so they got a way to get to school on bad snowy days. It's always clear. And that's just, you know, the kids in our neighborhood, there's many reasons to have it. And it's not just pickleball, tennis. It's their way to school, place for them to play. Kids learn how to ride their bicycles there. And it's just endless what else goes on there just besides pickleball and tennis.
Great. Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
I think we, um, we have a lot of, as he said, a lot of pickleball players come in there. I sit on my deck. I'm handicapped. I spend a lot of time at home, and I enjoy just watching the people. So I would really like to see it to remain there and/or be cleaned up.
Thank you. Appreciate the comment. Welcome.
Wes Zufeld, thirty-seven twenty-one Navajo Street. Um, I'm also in favor of keeping the tennis courts. But my suggestion, if we're gonna move the horseshoe pits, is Mill Race Park has a large plot of grass that is just vacant with street parking and everything like that. So they would have lots of room for tournaments. Um, you know, it's right there by Buck Creek and it's by, um, you know, the bike path and everything like that, and it's out of the way. There isn't any homes around there. So if they need room for that, there's, there's more than enough open space there, which would make sense versus taking something away from us to give them something. But yeah, so that's just a place that it could go without having to take something out of our neighborhood, so.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate the comments, Wes. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Rudy Van Houtt. I live at thirty-seven thirteen Navajo. I live right next to the tennis court. As we all know, Navajo Street is a cut-through street coming off Wilson. It's extremely busy. And, uh, the school is probably, uh, one of the participants in helping make it very busy. But other than that, there's a lot of stuff going on at the school, okay? And if you put horseshoe pits up in place of the tennis court, there may not be any parking there. Um, my wife and I can just simply look out the, the window or the porch, front porch, and the parking lot can be packed at any given time. Unless the, let's say we did have, uh, horseshoe pits installed and there's people participating there. Somebody's gonna have to get a schedule and find out what the school's up to. Because it gets real busy. Right now, tonight, the ball fields are packed and so is the parking lot. So there may not be any parking. And, uh, the other thing I wanted to say was, I'm worried that if it's just going to be, um, horseshoe pits, my problem with that is, is we're not looking at our little community on Navajo, Cheyenne, some of the other streets. We're not looking at the big picture here. We, what we really need is, we need the same energy that pickleball gives, that cornhole or bean toss gives, all the things that change in people's activities. We need some of that on Navajo. So I, I would be for, uh, expanding the tennis court to pickleball courts, if that's what it has to be. And something simple can be done in the meantime. Um, I understand, I don't play pickleball, but I did play tennis. And I understand that the pickleball court has three, three, four inches, uh, less net or lower net. So that's been a little bit of a problem there. But I see that, you know, people that have the mechanical aptitude can, you know, break up something for the net to lower it. Because we had a lot of people using that court for pickleball. And, uh, it's fun, it's fun to see it get used, so that's, that's where I'm at. Um, I like, I love the tennis court too and all the other things that we can do with it. I really don't want to make it just one activity, especially because if you make it just horseshoe pits, then, have you ever seen kids play horseshoes? With real live horseshoes on metal, on metal poles, right? Have you ever seen, uh, the women in the neighborhood play horseshoes? Uh, and, and I'm not being offensive to anybody, but I don't think there's that many women that play either. So I think we're going away from the family direction that Navajo and Cheyenne want in, in our community. Uh, the school's a big deal, okay? I, I, I know it's hectic there at times, but I like living there. I've been there almost twenty-eight years. My wife and I have been there that long. She grew up on Navajo, just six doors down, across the street, so. We like it there. My neighbors are here. They're wonderful people as well, and we don't want to change it radically. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate all the comments. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jeff O'Reilly. I live on three seven one four Navajo Street, right across from Rudy, actually. And I just kind of wanted to add on to what he said. I have a two-year-old daughter who looks at a big picture window at this tennis court every single day. And, uh, we were watching the US Open this year, watching Serena Williams, and she just really took to the sport already. And, uh, I just don't want to see that go away. I feel like I could be the King Jeffrey instead of King Richard. I could, uh, coach her up at that court, so we just would like that to stay.
Thank you. Appreciate the comment. Thank you for coming, sir. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council?
I'd just say I appreciate the comments from the neighbors. I'll, I'm, I'm the liaison from the council to the Park and Rec Board, so be sure to take your comments back to the, the board.
They can attend the park, next Park and Rec Board, being, and speak at the public comment period during the next public Park and Rec Board where apparently this is being discussed.
Yeah, we meet the fourth Wednesday of the month at the DPW building at seven PM. So it's open to the public. Anybody that's willing, if you're interested in comments, welcome to. Sure.
Thank you all.
Also, um, real quick, but something was mentioned about Mill Race Park. And there is, we've received a grant and there's going to be a lot of change coming to Mill Race Park as well. So there, there is something in the making for that part currently.
Thank you. Anybody else for a public comment? Carolyn? Kyla? Okay, Kyla. All right. Next item on the agenda is, uh, consent agenda. An approval of the consent agenda would be in the best interest of the city because there's a, uh, few purchases on there from, uh, Department of Public Works. So we've got the DPW September report and, uh, the Treasure and Police Report from September. The September minutes from the Environmental Sustainability Committee and the Historical Commission Library Board. And the Planning Commission October sixth, uh, minutes. Then we also have the ballot for the MML Liability and, uh, Property Appeal Board of Directors. Ken, what do we need to do on that?
Just need to authorize the court to submit the ballot on behalf of the council. And, um, we would assume that if you simply approve the consent agenda as it's been proposed, that the ballot that would be cast would be for the two parties named in the information, uh, on the back of the sheet for the two open positions. There is a write-in possibility, so if somebody from Granville wanted to mount a write-in campaign to get on the board, it could change our ballot, but, um, but that's what we expect.
Okay. Then, uh, we also have, under miscellaneous purchase orders and requests, uh, three things about DPW buildings. And there is a memo from Charlie on that. Thank you again, Chief, for a great, uh, report from the police departments. It's always interesting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city? Anybody want to talk about any of the particular items?
Yeah, just real quick, and, and Matt, I gotta hit some emails from Matt today, um, Planning Commission. Are these the buildings that we're gonna discuss at the potential special meeting for the Planning Commission? Okay. And I saw those notes and I saw this and, yeah, that's good.
Okay, so we have motion and support is, let's see, any, any other discussion? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Bernard Hook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwold?
Yes.
Gelderloch?
Yes.
Merringhoff?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Ken, City Manager's report.
Uh, the first item is requesting counsel for authorization to enter into the agreement that's in your packet from the MEDC. This is the, uh, grant agreement with the state, um, that follows up, um, their eight-hundred-thousand-dollar contribution to our, um, recent aerial fire truck order that we placed. Um, and so that comes a little bit of paperwork. Uh, however, the agreement is, um, pretty standard. It doesn't have any, um, responsibilities for the city other than, um, doing it right and paying the balance. So not a lot of surprise there. It's a standard document. It has been reviewed by the city attorney. And, um, we are capable of pulling the project off within the timeline that they've provided. So what we're requesting tonight would be. So what we're requesting tonight would be council authorization to enter into that agreement. I'd love to see who signs that. Chief, that's right, okay. And to authorize the player chief, Mike May, to sign the document.
It's a good thing to have to decide.
Absolutely.
Anything, Mike, you want to add on that?
Jane, I don't have anything in particular. Jane asked me to let you all know as far as financing for the city share of the purchase. She has been in touch with the lenders and right now, because of the volatility in that arena, nobody really wants to give any firm quotes until sometime after the first of the year. So she'll be soliciting those at that time, but right now it's just too soon.
Is there a motion to authorize Chief May to sign, enter into this agreement, grant agreement? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwalt.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringah.
Yes.
Northup.
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Next item, I don't know, Ken, if it's you or Matt, probably, master plan distribution. Planning Commission's been working on the master plan.
For a while, for the last fifteen months, I believe.
The Planning Commission has been working with Chris Corey of McKenna Associates. Started at last year's Vintage Festival where they're gathering public input. So it's been a great process thus far. Chris has just brought in a lot of new ideas and new concepts. Couple of highlights for the plan itself. It's really focused on the northern part of the city, Twenty-Eighth Street, that pyramid neighborhood we talked about and the surrounding areas to fit in with what we did in the zoning ordinance. As you recall, we added a lot more form-based codes in that northern area. We have a Twenty-Eighth Street form-based code. We have a North Wilson form-based code now. A downtown edge among some others, I think. We have an Ottawa code now, too, so. But what we also looked at is the future of the mall. And what would happen if the mall would ever close? Now, I want to be careful here. The mall's not going to close. We want to make that clear, that this is a hypothetical exercise that we went through. And we did work with the mall management as well as corporate. And they were very helpful. We brought in a whole design team that Chris was familiar with. And we shared ideas on what this may look like. So master plan has some of these details that kinda got drawn back a little bit from the details that we were talking about. With, every five years, we have to open up our master plan and review it. If something would happen, we don't have to wait five years to get in our master plan. We can reopen it when we need to. So at this stage, the Planning Commission's comfortable with this draft, and they're proposing that you send it out for distribution, which is a sixty-three-day shot clock. We send notices to every utility, neighboring jurisdictions, schools, railroads. Give them sixty-three days to review the plan. If they are working on any future projects, they are aware what we're thinking about. And after that, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at their first meeting in January. And we're gonna make, at that point, a recommendation to this council for its approval.
Jer, anything you'd like to add, your own planning?
Oh, Matt, Matt nailed it. We have been working on this for a long time, sometimes with a fine-tooth comb. I mean, literally, almost like house to house on certain areas that are bordering, business to business in that area. It was arduous and long and at times, you know, slightly painstaking, but this was far overdue to be done. And there's a lot of wonderful nuggets in there for the future. Wonderful.
Carolyn, Esther, anything you want to add?
Same thing. It's, you know, we've, we've gone over it with a fine-tooth comb. And hopefully it will be something that will withstand time, we can only tell, but we're ready to get, we're ready to pass it out to the world.
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, Matt, so you've been here long enough to know, have done this before. Do you, do you get many comments from other jurisdictions or the utilities or schools, or is it kind of, yeah, thank you?
You know, this is required in the Planning Enabling Act. You know, we get these from time to time from other jurisdictions, and what we do is forward it on to the Planning Commission for, to make them aware. Never had the need to reply to one of those.
Any questions for Matt? If not, is there a motion to approve the distribution of the draft master plan?
So move.
Support. And support. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwalt.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringah.
Yes.
Northup.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Great. Last item, but certainly not the least. Councilmember deliberations about the City Manager candidates. Does anybody want to take a five-minute break before we begin? Are everybody ready to go? Would you rather move right there?
Let's roll.
All right. Ken, anything you wanna, or you or Jerry want to guide us on, or?
I thought you just apologized for causing this, but...
It's, it's not too late.
The good news is I've, I've, you know, been here long enough to keep you out of this kind of situation for twenty-six years, so. There's, there's good and bad, but no, I, I'll defer to Jerry.
Okay. And as Jerry's coming up, I'll, I'll say, I know for a fact, none of us have ever done this before. Now, Paul, you selected a new pastor at your church not that long ago, so it's sort of similar. A big decision, very important.
Extremely important, actually. Yeah, interesting you referenced that. I mean, that was an eighteen-month process and involved a search team going twice to the state of New York and once to Texas and to a couple of spots in Michigan, and yeah, it was, it was an amazing experience, really. But then, more similar, though, I would, I would compare this, though, to, I've been on the six or seven-member search team for the Rapid Board. We've chosen two CEOs since I've been on the board. And it's been very similar with consultants and, and all that.
You know, it kinda reminds me of selecting, you know, who are you gonna give your house keys to, right? I mean, it's gotta be somebody that you trust very much, and as a council, we have oversight, but in a way, the city manager kind of has those figurative keys to the, I mean, the face of the city is very, very important. So, thank you for everybody who was able to come, and I know that, Josh, you've listened to the tapes. Thank you, Marcy, for making that. There was actually one I wanted to listen to again. I went there, I hit, and I, I ended up exactly at the right spot, so I don't know how you knew ahead of time that I wanted to start at like minute fifty-three or whatever it was, but... No, you had the whole thing. I just never hit it, and I'm like, whoa, that was, that was almost too easy, so. Thanks for making that possible. So I don't, I don't know really where you want to begin or how you want to begin. That's up to you all. Jerry, do you want to have, make, have some comments first before we...
I guess I would say that, and I believe I mentioned this briefly at the meeting on Saturday, that typically what happens is that you do a straw poll first to try to narrow down the number of the candidates you want to zero in on. And my suggestion would be that that would be done so that each individual council member gets an opportunity to do that, not impacted by other council members, so you get a true individual look at that. Part of the reason for that is that, at least in my view in the past, and this is about, I think, the twenty-seventh search that I've done, is if, in terms of zeroing in, I, I would suggest you look at the positives of the candidates as opposed to dwelling on the negatives. And if it's, and again, we're talking about fit, because in a previous session, you identified that the six that were interviewed have a number of the qualities and qualifications you're looking for, so which candidate is going to be the best fit for you? That, the concentration then is talking about to zero in on why you like particular candidates as opposed to why you didn't include certain candidates in your group, so that you're really focusing on a positive, and then go from there. So that would be my suggestion that, again, it's your call in terms of how you want to work it, but I can just say from, historically, I have seen a, at least in an initial straw poll, to zero in on a, on a smaller number, particularly when you have six. I've had searches with six, probably most of the time it's five or four, sometimes three, and so I think in terms of six, you might want to have a larger number in terms of what you're zeroing in on, as opposed to a smaller number to start with, to get some consensus around. The other thing I would say, and I may not get a chance to say this after all the discussion starts, is the candidates, particularly those who do not get offered the position, that any feedback you could provide me after the meeting, based on the interviews, based on the, the information that was provided, that I can then pass back to those, primarily those who were not successful, that would be helpful for me, because...
How do you want to get that information?
Well, I've just, verbally is fine, and I'll be here, I'm not gonna, you know, after the meeting. Just go ahead and provide it verbally to me, and that's something I can pass on. I would just say from a procedural standpoint, and it was included in the memorandum that I sent out regarding the, the draft interview questions, is there, our recommendation from the league is that a conditional offer of employment, assuming it can come to a consensus, would be offered to the, to the person that you, you choose. It's called conditional because we do, after the point at which a single finalist is identified, we will do and engage a third party to do a final background. And that includes education verification of all the degrees, driving records, all of the employment listings and the timeframes that were there. We basically will verify that all that is, is accurate on the resumes. And if, if it's not, or, again, we do a social media check initially, and I think, as you know, I checked two references in each person before their names were submitted to you as possible interview candidates. If additional information comes out that wasn't part, wasn't found previously, that conditional offer can be withdrawn. And so it's predicated on basically a a clean background and coming up with an employment agreement that both the council can approve and will approve and that the candidate would agree to. So the conditions are having an employment agreement and that both is signed by the candidate and approved by the, the city council and having a clean background.
I saw a news article in the last couple of weeks that in Ionia, they did a conditional offer of employment to candidate one, and then kind of a backup.
Correct.
And number two. Do you recommend that? I mean, do you think that's a good idea or a bad idea, or?
I do believe that it has its benefits, particularly if, you know, there's a consensus of the council that you have at least two or two of the candidates, but both be acceptable. One may be more acceptable or more desired than the second. And, and having a backup makes sense from the vantage point that if something happens that doesn't end in the hiring of the top person, we can automatically go to the second person. The city council won't have to reconvene, go through that. So yes, I think it is desirable. Again, i- if, if there's one and only one and there's not an agreement, you know, on, on a second, then obviously, then obviously, you probably wouldn't do that. But assuming there are two, I would say that's, I think, a good plan. And I would say, high percentage of the time, another ninety percent, the person that is going to, that it will be offered the conditional employment opportunity takes it. But there is always that possibility. Something happens. It could be personal, it could be anything that could happen, and, and so I think we'd then be prepared to move forward.
Jerry, two, two weeks ago, you had referenced, I believe, that situation in Ionia. And two of the people we interviewed
Correct.
were the two chosen by Ionia. So how does this play out?
Okay, so I can give you a little bit of history on that. The, the top person, primarily, I did speak to that person. I, I knew from day one that he had applied to both positions, because both entities, Ionia County and, of course, your city, hired the Michigan Municipal League, and I was the chosen facilitator for both of them. So I was, I've been involved with both of those folks longer than just the Granville search here. So when, so I, I knew that they had applied to both. And then when Mr. Durham was chosen, I spoke to him about it, and he indicated that he would, it was his choice to stay in this search. And so we had a conversation about that. It's strictly his choice. And I didn't feel it was my part to try to talk him out of it. So he chose to stay in the search. When he was chosen to interview, I did talk to him about a little bit of a dilemma here. And he volunteered to contact Ionia County to let them know that he was chosen for an interview. And were they okay with him interviewing here? They, that discussion ensued. They were okay with him interviewing here, and so he interviewed here. And, and I had less conversation about that with the, with the backup position, because again, the likelihood of the backup position being chosen was far less. And so there wasn't, as far as I consider, an issue there with that person continuing here, so. So I guess that's the, the, and, and I've had further communication, I can say, I'll tell you that. He is very interested in this position. And so I, I guess, the negotiations in, in Ionia County have ensued and is working toward an agreement there, not knowing, of course, what's gonna happen here. But an agreement hasn't been signed or, or approved.
So this person was offered the, just to be clear, not the Ionia city manager's job, but the county administrator's job for the county of Ionia, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was not clear.
The city of Ionia is strong there, or not?
No, they have a city manager.
Really? Okay.
Yeah.
They have partisan elections, though, in Ionia, which is odd, so odd there, yeah.
You guys had questions?
That was kind of my question, too, is, you know, to the best of your knowledge, has there been an agreement accepted from the Ionia offer? And it sounds like no at this point, and then...
No, it's not.
How would that work as far as, if there were to be a second offer? Does that sort of play out with negotiations of contracts? You can end up like bidding, and how's that work?
Yeah, I can't speak for the
Obviously, there's details there.
person that would be sort of in the middle on that. I guess you could read between the lines and come to your own conclusion in terms of, he had an offer, there was another possibility, and he chose to interview here. So, again, without, you know, without having specifically, and, and he did, does recognize that that I'm sort of in the middle on this, because it just so happens that I handled both searches. The fact, and, and so, you know, in one respect, I guess you could say maybe I'd be a little bit biased. And I guess I'll just let you think about which way I would be biased in, in, in the whole thing, but that being said, here, I would say that you have to make a choice what you think is in the best interest of the city of Granville. And wherever the chips fall, they fall.
Randy, did you have a question?
Not really a question. I was just gonna say we have just a little teeny-tiny little technical issue. All due respect to our very esteemed city clerk de formses. And all due respect to our very esteemed city clerk de forms, it's Mayor Pro Kim, instead of manager. So I just want to reassure JR, we're not gonna throw you out of office tonight.
Technically, yeah.
Okay, with that, just wanted to point that out.
So now, I mean, this, this is our process, we understand that. But in, in the past, when, when somebody does kind of like a preliminary straw poll, et cetera, do they, do people go, this is one, two, three, four? Or do they go, this one, this one, this one, and that's?
I guess I've seen, my suggestion would be the first, assuming you're gonna do more than one straw poll, I would not number them the first time.
So no rank voting?
Just in terms of, again, zeroing it down, who are your top three or whatever? And then, or four, or whatever the number is that you come to a consensus on, and then see where it goes from there. Because I think it can get with, when you have more options, I mean, you can do it the other way. It's just, it can be a little more confusing. You've got, if it's a top four and you've got, you know, one, two, three, four, and then you've got, you know, seven people having one, two, three, four, and you start looking at the numbers. Um I, I think that in terms of zeroing it down, it, it, in terms of going from three or four to, let's just say, a minimum of two, um then you, then you can, when you get down to the smaller number, start numbering them so that, that it's, it becomes obvious who's the top person from, from each of you.
And so I'm, I'm assuming too, if we start, start kind of a straw poll, we can change our mind. If, if in our discussion, we're not wed to, oh, I pick those four persons, I can't change now.
Right. Then generally what happens is, and, and again, just historically, if one of, say the four, say you, you look at four and as a council member, uh you, maybe in your own mind, uh number one didn't even get included in the, in the four. Well, this is your opportunity after the information's out there to say, you know, here's why I think this person should be as part of the top four. And you start talking about the answers they provided or the experience they have or the education they have. That's where the deliberations come into play. You have books in front of you that have the resume, cover letter, how they answered, to the extent you took notes, how they answered the questions that were asked. And they all asked, you know, they all were asked the same questions and uh, and, and, you know, and gave you their individual responses, so.
Quick question about the background check piece that you mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is it possible to get like a most recent performance review as part of that, or is that not something you can ask for?
It depends, I guess. Uh it's typically not there, but as part of it. Um and, and it depends on, on, you know, what's in the person's personnel file. So I can say that I've done twenty-seven of these and we've never, it's not part of the, what the third party's gonna do.
I thought there were.
For the, the um background check.
Okay.
What I typically do uh is I will do more reference checks and certainly the uh, I can talk to uh folks, and I have to go back and see who I talked to in their particular situation, but talk to their elected officials current and, and ask that question in terms of part of the background. And, and, and see what I get for information.
Yeah, so it's kind of subjective, maybe, but.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jerry?
I'm here, if you have any questions. Yep, yep, I'm here.
Stay right down the front row.
So gentlemen, what do you think?
Randy?
I think I'm comfortable with maybe voting for the top four in a non-ranked order. That's my thought.
Personally, I'm, I'm good with that. Real, better than good with that. I like that.
Should I make a motion?
I mean, I, I can go three actually, but I'll do four, yeah.
All right, I make a motion that we vote for the top four for purposes of discussion in a, in a non-ranking order. Support that.
Motion support, discussion. Marcy, we're gonna.
I was just gonna make a quick comment before we start here. So, you know, first of all, I wanted to apologize to all of you for being absent on Saturday. That was kind of unexpected.
We did excuse you.
You were excused, I appreciate that. Um you guys had a long day. I, and just for the record, I'm supposed to state that I did review all the audio, all six hours of it over the weekend. So I should be fully up to speed and able to, to discuss. But thank you for your gracious excuse, excusing me from the meeting.
And your family is fine? I mean, it was.
It's fine, yeah.
Not an emergency.
No, it wasn't an emergency, just business.
Okay.
Family obligations, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what do you think? Should we do top four?
So which?
Oh, wait. We already have that motion and support.
Yeah.
Marcy, if you call the roll on that, yeah, Tom. Okay, which call the roll, please. And also those other comments.
Councilmember Vanderwall?
Yes.
Gelderwels?
Yes.
Merrinda?
Yes.
Northhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Tru?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss?
Yes.
I said this is good practice for uh November eight or.
Four, are we using this one?
This one.
Can we say the top one and just circling four?
Circle four, okay.
Yeah, just circle four.
Oh, that's right, you've already passed out there.
Maybe you put manager on there, JR.
You didn't, you didn't cross that out. I'm surprised you didn't cross that off, Paul.
Where do you want to start?
Where do you want to start?
Oh, yeah, we, we need to sign this too, don't we?
Yeah, if you don't sign it, it's no good. Yeah, it's gonna be.
I guess. We can do this one.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes.
We establish, just to change your mind.
I don't want to mess up at the very first.
Now it's easy to have so much.
Well, now I've got papers going in the direction.
I didn't want to.
This is crazy.
This goes here, this goes here. Yes.
I didn't realize that was my drawing.
I can't believe that they would think of like harsh shit checks. And they are partly by the school. And it's like, I was adamant. And then the doctor comes back to like four or six bills because nobody comes.
I wish you guys were fine with having that.
It's like twenty dollars.
No, it was like twenty and five there.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's because you have both clay and.
I believe you'd have to read.
I would love to see if it was actually all laid out.
Okay, Marcy, you got some results.
I'm gonna just take these in order. Gelderwels, one vote for Womack, Dotson, Durham, Butts. Merrinda, Womack, Dotson, Durham, Butts. Northhook, Womack, Dotson, Durham, Butts. Steenstra, Womack, Dotson, Durham, Butts. Tru, Womack, Dotson, Durham, Butts. Vanderwall, Womack, Dotson, Durham, Butts. Mayor Moss, Dotson, Durham, Jordan, Butts. So the ones that came out on top, we had seven for Dotson, Durham, Butts, and one vote for Womack, or six for Womack. Those are the top four.
That's pretty clear. I was the one who was a little off with the rest, but other than that, it was very. I'll just make this comment, and it's not because I'm trying to backtrack, but a little bit. I was impressed with Womack also. He was the guy from Cedar Springs and I thought he had a lot of energy. It would be a big, a bigger challenge, but um, and I, and I also, yeah, so let me just leave it there. I'm very happy with him as well. Okay, now what?
What's next, Randy?
Yeah, Randy. He's actually got the official shirt. Well, Tim does too. Yeah, okay.
The shirt.
I yield this.
Anyone can ask me.
Do we, do we rank order the four next otherwise? Or I don't know how, what's the next step? Would you look down from four or start discussing some candidates or?
Maybe now would be a good time to do that. I, I, I don't know.
Like, do you talk about your top one or any of the ones that you picked or what do you, how do we do this?
You know what? I'll just start off. I'm just gonna say what I liked about, you know, the four candidates that we have here. Obviously, Matt's our local and uh his um knowledge of the infrastructure here is a, is a, is a positive for him. Mr. Durham has extensive history in various communities, very differing communities as well. Um I think that uh his experience in multiple areas and what those communities have to offer, I think he would fit here as well also. Uh Mr. Dotson, obviously a lot of energy there. Um love that he also has a lot of uh involvement with youth activities and sports. Think that would ground him here fairly well. I think Mr. Womack would do a nice job as well. Uh this seems like a uh, a reasonable next step for him, coming from the city of Cedar Springs. I think this would be a solid stepping stone for him. So those are my positives for the four that we've selected.
Anybody else want to go? I won't probably touch on all, all four that I did, or, yeah, but um, right. Matt has a lot of institutional knowledge. He definitely does. Does a fine job with planning commission. DDA got an extensive history of, of the city. I really also liked Dennis Durham. And I, I made a couple of notes on why that was. A couple of his answers I thought were pretty, they really struck me and I, I highlighted them. Oh, I thought it was interesting. He was a journalist, so, but he wants to make news, not just write about it. I thought that was kind of an interesting comment. Um I also liked, when he said, if there's a, if he's, he's had, if he has had to terminate somebody's employment, he feels a sense of responsibility to a point because part of his job, he's responsible to get people to reach the potential. I really, really like that. He does weekly updates to the council. I thought that was good. On his bud, his idea of budgeting, I, I haven't quite digested it all, but, and, and maybe this is so obvious, but it just struck me, is in the budgeting process, you establish your goals and objectives. What is it that you want to do? And then you do your, your budget rather than, okay, this is how much money we have, what are we gonna, what are we gonna, how are we gonna divvy that? Anyway, um and uh, yeah, Tyler Dotson, he's the guy, um, yeah, just a lot of energy and a lot of enthusiasm. He's the guy from Water Lake, I believe, yes. So different kind of a community, but yeah, so those are my comments. I think you don't have to if you don't want to either. It's just like, whatever.
I would just add a couple of things to what's already been said, I guess. Um Mr. Durham, I like the, that he had the experience with the economic development. He was the one from parchment who had the paper mill close and had a pretty extensive history with MEDC and um with doing a lot of economic development in that area. So I thought that was impressive. Womack, um Mike Womack, I guess what I thought was particularly impressive about him, and he was actually the first one I listened to. I listened to him in the same order you did, just to make sure that I was kind of getting the same experience. But I was impressed that he took the day off and came and drove around town. He was the only one that did that. And checked out all of our parks and actually called people in the community. You know, you mentioned talking, trying to talk to the superintendent. He wasn't able to talk to everybody he tried to call. But I was impressed that he did that level of um, you know, just checking things out and touring. And he was very familiar with, you know, our, our grant that we received for the parks. He did his research for sure. Uh I also liked that he has a public administration degree, which is one of our preferred qualifications. He doesn't have as much experience as some of the other candidates. Um I guess, uh the only negative I would see would be maybe that he doesn't have the negotiation experience because they don't have the unions in Cedar, but I thought he had a lot of good potential. Um Dotson, you know, as was mentioned, he also did a lot of research. He uh.
And he's got the brochure.
He had the brochure, yeah, which I saw today. Um he obviously looked a lot on the website and he had gone through meeting minutes and things like that. And I thought that was also impressive, the extent that he went to, to learn about our community, if not coming in person, at least, you know, by the information that was available online. Because I don't think all the candidates actually did a lot of research on us, but those are a couple that stand out to me that definitely did. Uh Mr. Durham did to a certain extent as well, talking about the ethics policy and so forth. Um so I thought those things were impressive. Uh Mr. Dotson obviously has a lot of energy. He's kind of got a bigger personality, a little more outgoing maybe than some of the others. But I also did like, you know, JR mentioned that he's involved with youth sports and, you know, looking to get engaged in, in different aspects of the community too. They all mentioned that. Um Womack mentioned, you know, running around the community and going to different festivals. I think they all talked about, you know, being engaged with different community groups and things like that, so. Those are just a couple of initial thoughts that I had. And of course, you know, we've all worked with Matt and, you know, Matt does have that institutional knowledge and a lot of the history here and, you know, has, has, has contributed a lot of service here in, in DDA and planning commission, as you mentioned. So really some great candidates overall. Everyone brings a little bit of something different, but.
You know, um Dennis, Dennis Durham, I liked um that he, he knows the job and um he's gonna take responsibility for um the work of the directors. I like his track record, uh nine, ten years in parchment. I did, Jerry, wonder about his sudden departure, his resignation. And he didn't really address that when Paul asked the question, is there anything you should share? And I was kind of hoping he'd just share it, you know, be it, be it good, be it bad. I don't know the story, but just to say to us, I want you to know, I resigned quickly at parchment. But he did great things in parchment with business development, um the striker negotiations and uh for him to recognize our code of ethics and, you know, he didn't just appreciate it, I think he loved it. I think uh Michael Womack, uh he's got a pretty, for city manager, six years in Cedar Springs, which is good. Um it'd be a, 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 a growing experience for him to come here, triple the budget. Um but I think he's got the, the smarts and he certainly has um the passion for it. Uh what struck me about him is how much he's involved in all the events of Cedar Springs. He, he's there all the time. Um so uh Tyler Dotson, he's um, he's got a, a lot of smarts and uh he, he comes prepared. He, I actually liked him more when he wasn't prepared for a question and he talked to us in a more informal way. He's a bit, a bit formal um in, in his interactions. He's a bit, a bit formal, um, in, in his interactions with us. Who's our last? Oh, Matt. Yeah, we've seen Matt, and, uh, his knowledge of people in, in Granville is valuable. Sometimes, um, you know, I, I, I don't know. Well, I'll leave it at that. You know, um, Matt's, Matt's heart is here. He loves Granville.
Jerry, did you want to address the issue that Tim brought up?
Sure.
I, I actually had a similar question, and so I listened to that tape, the, the very end of it, again, to get a little more clarity.
So, um, regarding the, um, Mr. Durham's departure from Parchment, as he explained to me, uh, he was there, as mentioned, a total of nine years, but, uh, previous to his leaving a new, uh, or basically there was a turnover in the city council, and, um, in that, and I think he did touch on this, that he, um, he recognized, and I don't know what, I didn't get into the details about, you know, what campaign people ran on, but he basically quickly came to the conclusion that the new, uh, majority council would like to see a change in the manager's position. So he went, uh, to them and said, "I'll, my contract expires in the spring. I'll just plan on not renewing the contract, and you can pick your, your next administrator." Well, uh, as it was told to me anyway, from him, that, um, they decided they wanted to move faster than that. And, um, and so basically, um, they, whether it was individuals who were elected officials or people that were working in with them, basically, uh, took a look at some procedures that had been long, uh, practices, long-time practices within the organization, and tried to make a story out of it. And there was, uh, an article, at least one, uh, or two, that if you researched, uh, the, um, his name, comes up, and essentially, uh, had to do with the use of, of a city credit card. And, um, the articles never talk about who was involved in it, but I, I believe that he, at least, he did have, in terms of use of the credit card, uh, and the practice. It was an ongoing practice that, uh, was audited. The Michigan State Police came in and looked, and there were no, you know, no irregularities found. So bottom line was that, uh, that was the case. Unfortunately, that kind of news media press and the fact that he was working with a city council that really didn't want him there, I think got, got him to a point where he, he decided on his own to leave. And he was, uh, doing, uh, and had a, a, a small consulting firm that he was consulting, uh, with other units of government on government-related topics, and so his idea was that he was going to do that for a while, to let, to basically, until he found another job. This is my view, um, and he decided to basically walk away from the city. In most cases, and you have an attorney here that could probably verify this, but, um, in a lot of cases, if you're forced to resign, you have an argument that they should be paying you severance. The reason why they basically, at least that was told to me, why they came up with this credit card issue, was they really didn't want to pay a severance. In most managers' contracts, you're an at-will employee, uh, but if, if you're terminated for cause, then they don't pay severance. And they were trying to make a cause out of this. Well, in, in the end, there were, there really wasn't a cause. Uh, he had an option to probably seek legal remedy to be paid, but that never sits well for a person that's trying to get another city manager's position in another community. So he chose the professional sort of, uh, approach to just let it go, and, and then moved out of the area to another community after, uh, uh, you know, taking some time to find another position. So at least in my view, from everything I've read and, and could find out about it, there really was a lot of smoke, but no fire there, I guess, to, maybe use an old, uh, terminology that, um, because I, I know that if there were charges or something came up, it would have been all over the newspaper, and there was nothing in there about it. And they were very cautious to not mention who, you know, who was allegedly not properly using the credit card. So I think they were a little concerned about some liability, probably, but again, that's just my thought on it. So from my vantage point, I, and he has managed two communities in the past. He had good reasons for making the move from Oregon to, uh, to Iowa, and I think, uh, and I know that, uh, the Iowa, uh, situation, uh, and he's done very well there in terms of, uh, stabilizing it, but they went through a number of managers in a short period of time before him. So that, uh-
And how long has he been there again?
Two years.
Two years?
Yeah, and-
And he's got a good reason to come back this way.
Correct, yeah. The International City Management Association sets two years as a limit, uh, in terms of, if, if you leave a community, uh, for, and, and your own volition, uh, within, before two years, then, then you're basically, uh, are, are probably going to, uh, have an ethics violation, you know, brought up, uh, for you if you're not there two years. So he's been there two years plus, uh, and so, um, I think from everything I could see, there, there isn't really a, a character issue or, you know, something that, um, would be a red flag.
Thank you. That makes me feel good.
I had, I had a question too, Jerry, um, since, since you're up here. You know, two of the candidates went through a similar exercise with the MML with you.
Correct.
Were they given the same questions in their interview?
No. Uh, the good question, no.
Yeah.
I, that was my challenge, to have to, uh, vary up the questions. A couple of them were the same. Generally, we try, like, the first question about your background, tell us about your history, and, you know, why you're interested in this position, uh, is an easy question for them. The whole purpose of it is both to, uh, enlighten you, hear, you know, how they deliver and, and present themselves, but this is a stressful situation, so it's sort of to lower the stress level a little bit. So first question or two, uh, the same, and then I, I varied them up.
I figured, but I had to ask.
No, that was a good, that was a good question, because, uh, you know, I'll say this too about, uh, Mr. Dotson. Part of the reason, and I'll give you my take on his, you know, being a little more formal, is I, I generally, and I should say always, the advi, advice I give to the candidates is come prepared and, um, think through the position, think through where you're at, and, and, uh, also in the preparation, don't be afraid to bring some notes with you, you know, and be organized. So he, uh, followed my suggestion in terms of, now, I didn't say anything about bringing something to hand out. That was his doing, uh, but certainly that didn't hurt him at all. So I think that he showed, you know, his, you know, just, that's what you're, you know, that's, that's him in terms of how he presents himself, and, uh, but he, he basically, um, I thought was, you know, did what I suggested was effective that I've seen in the past. And I, I don't, uh, generally, that's the only, the only other thing I tell folks is that they can call, in my opinion, they can call whoever they want in the community, but don't talk to you folks who are making the decision. But whoever you want to call and talk to is up to you, so, of course, uh, Mr. Womack, you know, did that. And, and kudos to him for doing that. So those are basically the two pieces of advice I give all the candidates, uh, wanting to talk to.
I was just gonna say, I think though, Mr. Durham also did some research and seemed pretty well versed on the community. No handout, but just throw it out there.
So, Larry, you want to have another vote and narrow it down, and if so, to who?
Or Justin and I could talk too. Do you want to say anything else, or do you want me to?
I'm glad. I think most of what's been said, I would be redundant.
Yeah, same. Oh, I got a few things I guess I would add. Um, I mean, Dennis Durham, I, I, he is my top candidate, and I, I wrote down many of the same comments that the mayor did. I, I like very much his, his, his experience and the fact that he's come from really much bigger time and bigger show than we are, whereas everybody else is coming from smaller time than we are. I mean, I'm talking about Kalamazoo and, uh, Portland, right? Or not Portland, Portage. Wasn't he also in Portage though?
I think he was.
Pershing's really small.
Pershing is small, but wasn't he also in Portage? Yeah, Portage is definitely bigger than us and Kalamazoo. Anyway, he has great experience, and I really like that he's, um, Josh mentioned this too, he's laser focused on economic development. Um, I like that. I'm not saying that we're lacking that now, or that we're really in desperate need of that, but I just like that. He also said something that nobody else said, um, that our downtown is the envy of other communities, which it is. Nobody else around here even has a downtown, except for Grand Rapids, you think about it. Walker, Wyoming, Kentwood, Hudsonville, they're trying to build one, right? Wyoming's trying to build one. Dennis, I mean, we have an old downtown, you know? That is an asset, and he realizes that. Womack and Dotson, I like them both. I, I think they're both ready to move up. I really do. Womack, I, I probably would have moved up by now if he would smile a little bit more in his interviews.
You gotta be there a second time.
Be my estimation.
You gotta be there a second time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was his thing.
Yeah.
He was, he was better by the end of the interview.
Yeah, yeah, he established a better comfort level than, um, but I like his community involvement very much, and it, it's clear that both he and Dotson have a, have a passion for, for service to the community, which I like a lot. And I like Dotson's formality, by the way. I like that he said, "Thank you for your question" every time. I, I actually like that a lot. And I liked his energy. Um, I, I took it for enthusiasm, and he was super, super prepared for the interview. Not that Womack wasn't, but, um, yeah, I, I mean, they were both, they're both ready to move up, you know, and, and one of them might be a, a, a fair fit here, but I just put Durham at the top.
Well, now I'm gonna speak, I guess.
Good?
Good. Um, if we're gonna reveal, uh, you know, who our top are, just in case this next vote is the vote. So, um, I have gone back and forth in my mind between Durham and Dotson over and over and over, and so I'm gonna speak on why I'm selecting Dotson as my top pick, and that is because, um, I think he really did bring a lot of passion. We want every city manager to be like Ken, and, uh, Dotson has a drive that I think someday, when he sits in that seat, he would be like Ken. He is driven. He believes in building teams, building capacity, um, succession planning. He talked about, "I want people who want more than just a job." I really think he would have very strong passion for, um, building a vision among the city staff and helping take everyone to that vision. So I thought he was the strongest. I obviously agree with everything that was said about Durham. But I, that was the tiebreaker for me. It was a, Dotson was very, very knowledgeable on our city. The passion came across very strongly, and I just think he has that drive to not just be a placeholder, but to be someone who really takes things to the next.
Any insights, um, that, that you may have picked up on his flexibility or inflexibility?
Not from, uh, the interview. Um, I think anytime you're that passionate, that probably is, uh, a consideration, right? I'm, I'm pulling, pulling us this direction, and everybody needs to be on board. But I, I took away from him really valuing the input of other people.
How, how about a listener? Did you find him to be a, a good listener? You know, sometimes I, I get concerned about people who are, are that much of, let's say, not a Granville bulldog, but, you know, someone who's well-prepared and goes at it. Are you listening to other people and getting their input? Did you pick anything up, you know, in your notes from him saying he's a listener? And, uh, he, he works team. I heard him say "I" quite a bit. And not "we".
Yeah, I, I guess, um, his, in question 12, "Describe your management and leadership style", he talked about a collaborative approach. He talked about, um, how you have to work with your department heads. You have to empower people. You have to listen to them and their ideas. People have to be happy in their job. So I don't, from those comments, I don't take away someone who is my way or the highway. I just don't see that coming across from it.
I was just gonna find out, it's a couple times he said, "You need to be kind and empower people."
He did go to Ohio State. I look beyond that.
That would be the Ohio State. He said "the" Ohio State. Yeah, he got something.
And I thought it was interesting too, that he said, help, you know, one of the questions was like, "How long would you plan on staying as city manager in Granville", and he said, "As long as possible."
And I would just conclude, one extra point on there is, um, I know all money is all of our money when it comes to government spending, but I was most impressed by his strength in grants, and being aware of grants, he said, "There's money out there. Managing those grants is key. You have to use your network. You have to, uh, use facilitators appropriately." And the part that I had at the top that stood out to me the most was that you have to chase them. And so I felt like he really would be someone who's motivated for, "How can I bring additional funds into the city?"
You know, he said, "Getting the grants, you just have to be aware they're there and write them to respond", and he said, "Now administering the grants is harder."
So speaking of grants, though, I thought, so Womack's my, my first choice. Dotson and Durham were probably, you know, also good choices, but, um, Womack also mentioned grants, since he brought that up.
Yeah, I was gonna remind that.
Because Cedar Springs being a, you know, a less affluent a community, he's like, to get anything done, basically, you gotta get grants. So I feel like he's also been very persistent in getting grants for parks, and, you know, what'd he say, that they had just gotten something for a park? And, um, anyway, I thought that was impressive too, that he was also pretty strong in the grant side of it.
Both of those guys were. I noted that as well, and both of them will come from communities where they, they've got to be, you know, and to their, you know, to their credit, they, they are. But they've got that experience, and, you know, the communities they're from and the grants they're getting, you know, like CDVG monies and stuff like that, you know, we're, we're not gonna be eligible for a lot of the stuff that they're getting right now, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't, you know, get what's out there.
How would you like to proceed? Like, go number one in first, second choice?
First, second, third?
First, only? Don't everyone speak?
I would say, I would say rank.
How many would you pick?
I don't, I wouldn't say just pick one, because we're not all gonna have the same one.
I think we're better than the-
And I think if you, I think if you rank it maybe between the first and second, we all have similar, I don't know. I would say rank first two or three or four. I guess you could put all four in order too.
If you're gonna rank three, you might as well rank four.
Yeah, I guess. That's just my thought.
Yeah. If you rank three, you're right. Essentially rank four. Good point.
Unless everybody has a different idea, but I feel like that maybe helps kind of sort out where people are at with-
Might as well. Two?
One and two, yeah.
I agree. I agree, one and two.
One and two?
I like two better now too.
Uh, you know, now, there's, yeah, I think so.
See where we end up anyway.
Yep. Is that a motion?
All right, I support.
Go ahead. Did I make a motion?
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did.
Mr. Attorney, did I make a motion?
Yes, I heard it.
Any discussion about that, if not? Oh, yeah, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Charles Moberg, Elders, us?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Stanstraw?
Yes.
And Merrimas.
Yes. Using this form, so use the same sheet and pick one and two?
Are we gonna write like a one next to our one and two next to our two? Is that what we're doing?
One, one through four, right?
We're not circling both.
No, I think we're going to-
Oh, just two, right, yeah.
Just two, one anchor, just circle.
Sorry, I knew that, yeah.
Ranking.
One and two.
Thank you. Don't need to cross out the others. You don't need to cross off the others. Cross off Mayor Trott. Yeah, I did cross off Mayor Trott.
Cross off Mayor Trott.
I choose the question. They say you have three different signatures on your record.
It's dependent on what you call it.
What signature are you using this year?
That's why I voted personally.
There you go.
Show, show your ID now. Is your signature on your ID too?
Right, right, right. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I guess it's your. Oh, that's my. He's high energy. But I, I like him.
I like him.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, it's a village, isn't it?
Watergate?
It is a city. Wow, okay.
Hartman. They had, they had that huge paper.
Enormous paper.
Like he said, like eighty buildings on that side. I think that was awesome. Yeah. Which would be a real challenge. Cause weren't there?
I sold them all someday.
Weren't there dishes?
Oh, yeah.
Environmental issues, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was Superfund side.
Yeah. Huge one. Although it is a, it is always a damn highlight. Superfund sounds nice. It's not something you wanna be, though. Yeah, that's super.
Kalamazoo is a real super. You're exactly right. My issue for twenty years. There's so many meanings in that.
I guess they live close to each other. It's a big township though.
I'm so reassured.
Marcy, don't you wish every election was just fast?
I do.
Results like in thirty seconds.
She's saved by her assistant. She's just got better help on election day, so.
Okay, Marcy, I think is ready.
All right, and I will read everyone's first choice and the second choice. Gelderlos, first choice Durham. Second choice Womack. Meringa, first choice Womack. Second choice Durham. Nordhook, first choice Dotson. Second choice Durham. Steenstra, first choice Durham. Second choice Dotson. Truist, first choice Durham. Second choice Womack. Vanderwall, first choice Durham. Second choice Dotson. Mayor Mas, first choice Durham. Second choice Dotson. So that leaves, um, Durham and Dotson as the top two.
Did you give the totals for first and second? So you, you've weighted it already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah.
So the totals for candidate number one for Womack, that is one. Um, candidate number, for Dotson, he had one. Um, Durham, he had five. And then Dotson was the second choice.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I wasn't following.
These are first and second.
First choice, second choice. Yeah.
Okay.
So the first choice was one for Womack. One for Dotson. Five for Durham. Second choice was two for Womack. Three for Dotson. And two for Durham. So the final two would be?
Dotson and Durham.
Dotson and Durham.
Thoughts? Okay, so that's the voting. What are your thoughts about doing like Ionia did? Giving a conditional offer to one and kind of a, what would you call it? Backup conditional offer for the, the next person or?
Yeah. A contingency on top of the contingency.
Yeah, so Matt, I mean, that's not a problem for you to draft such a motion if we wanted that, but.
Sure.
We need to make sure that is what we wanna do or don't want it. Boss.
You know, Jerry, how, so you make a contingent offer, but I feel like the purchase agreement could have a thousand pieces to it, right? And if we can't agree on a purchase agreement or the candidate doesn't like that, I mean, is this, is this pro, are we still in the infancy of this, of this process here?
I would say, I guess, depending on, let me just back up. Your current city manager has an employment agreement. If the basis for that employment agreement is, would be in terms of the basic knowledge or the basic components of it, would be if assuming, if you can assume that it would be similar, then really you're just talking about filling in the blanks. So that process can move, typically what happens, well, one of the second, um, motion after a conditional offer would be to appoint the officials that are going to, uh, negotiate the agreement on behalf of the city with the understanding that the whole, the total, the agreement would have to be approved by the total council, uh, before it actually gets approved. So these can go relatively fast, uh, depending on, well, how far apart are the, are the, um, uh, terms. And there is a, the International City Management Association has a, a model agreement that pretty much covers every possible item that could be in the agreement. So in terms of actually, you know, having to draft a language, it might get tweaked by your attorney, but the fact is, I mean, it's pretty much all there. So most of the work is, well, salary, uh, sometimes vacation in terms of, you know, coming in with the experience and wanting different vacation, whether there's any moving expenses or not. Those are the things that are negotiated. If you can, you know, if you come to agreement pretty quickly on those, I think the process moves along fairly fast.
I apologize. I, I pretty trust that purchase agreement.
Yeah, I, I knew what you were talking about. Right. So I understood. Uh, so that, um, it's, it can move, I would say typically takes, uh, you know, it could take a couple of weeks, two, three weeks. It depends on how fast it goes. Now, I, I do know that, uh, your top candidate needs to give at least forty-five days notice as part of his employment agreement to his, uh, current employer. And generally, the, the, those in that position will not give official notice until they actually have a signed agreement that's been approved by the city council. So once you get, so that's probably, just have to say, probably at least three weeks away, uh, from that by the time that you come up with the term, and again, it depends on how quickly whoever's appointed works on this and then gets a, gets a draft to the, uh, your chosen candidate and they return, you know, back and forth, uh, that can go fairly quick or it could take a week or two. But I would say we're, you know, again, assuming that you're gonna use the basis of, of what Ken's, uh, employment agreement is, uh, as kind of your foundation to start, then, um, you, it shouldn't take too long to put it together.
Matt, I've got a question for you. When, when we discuss this employment agreement, like salary and so on, can we do that in closed session or not?
The contract can be negotiated in closed session, but then it becomes a.
Okay.
Public document when you make it, when you give it to the candidate, it becomes a public document.
Can, uh, question. Um, what if, uh, we want to strategize a bit and say, "We're gonna select these two or three council members to sit down with him and negotiate." Are we able to do that in closed session and give them some parameters for negotiation?
I don't believe so.
Okay, okay.
And, and I would modify my answer to your prior question, Mr. Mayor, that if you got, uh, city attorney's office involved, that would have those communications be protected during the negotiation until you got to a final contract that you wanted to extend to the candidate.
So typically then, who does the negotiation? The MML on our behalf or the mayor or? Fill in the blanks.
I mean, if I would do it or an individual would do it, we certainly need very clear parameters.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
Well, let me just clarify, and, and I did have this in the memorandum, that the league does not take a position on, in the employment discussion. Certainly, uh, I'm available to be an intermediary, if that's the right term, or facilitator, so that if there happens to be a hangup and I can talk to whoever represents the city and say, "This is what we're offering and why," and then talk to the, uh, candidate to say, "Here's, you know, where they're at" and kind of be that mediator. But the, the league intentionally doesn't take a side in the negotiations because it's really the city and the individual. I'm, I'm available to facilitate and mediate if needed or wanted, uh, in my involvement as part of what our service agreement includes.
Jerry, how often do you see candidates that have been selected be represented during the contract negotiation process?
Uh, by.
By attorney?
Um, rarely. Rarely. I mean, and again, they may have somebody on the side that they send it to to see, but, um, I, I think that most of the time, if you're using pretty straightforward language, I mean, there, there's, as I mentioned, the ICMA model, uh, agreement has the language without suggesting dollar numbers or amounts of, of benefit or not. But if you, if you're looking for a certain, uh, language or, 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 um, item, they have pretty much covered every possible thing. They're not suggesting you should have it all in there, but if you are, are wanting to have a certain item in there, here's some suggestion language on how to put it in. For instance, evaluations. And I, again, I, I think I may have a copy of your current manager's contract, but whether it has an evaluation clause or not in it, and some, some managers want to have that included in it and how it's done and get into the details of that, or some not. So you won't know until you actually get into the discussion. But again, I, I don't see, most things are fairly cut and dried.
Are relocation costs included in that?
That's negotiable.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, and again, you can look at a set amount or, you know, some, there, again, that's all negotiable. It's all part of the employment agreement. It can be predicated on moving in the community or, you know, where they're located or where they move to. So those are all, you know, negotiated, uh, uh, items and again, up for, I mean, there's, there are a lot of different things. It can be set amount, it can be, uh, as I mentioned, uh, an allowance. If, if you, you know, they'll be covered if you, you know, move or if you move within a certain amount of days or, I mean, there's, there's just a lot of, uh, options there and, and the model agreement would have some of that. Um, and I know your, uh, your city attorney, uh, represents other cities with employment agreements, so I'm sure they have a library of information too that they can draw from.
Ready?
Yeah. Well, I'm just gonna think out loud, so it might be dangerous. I guess I'm inclined to just say that my thought would be, we just offer Dennis Durham conditional, you know, option for employment and not make a secondary or backup offer based on three things, given the fact that Womack and Dotson are so close together. There's just one vote separating them. That's one point. My second point is there was some talk amongst us, did we wanna go back to the market or see if we could get a bigger pool, you know, to interview? And I think that was based on our history of hiring, uh, we have a practice of hiring within and there was some talk that maybe some people didn't apply because they assumed that we were gonna give it to our assistant manager. And also, there was some talk early on that perhaps we weren't offering high enough salary and there would have been people who would have applied if we were gonna pay a little more. So, and lastly, I think you'd be, there's nobody from Ionia County here, but I think you'd be a fool to pick Ionia County over Granville.
No kidding. Will you get more money here for an easier job in a smaller population? Yeah.
So I think we make one offer and ride it out after that.
So let me just follow up on your, I think it was your third point. Just for kicks, I went to Marcy's chart and kind of weighted it, I did, the, yeah, the way I sort of do it. So if somebody got choice number one, they got two points. And if they were second, they got one point. So when we do it that way.
Mm-hmm.
Durham had twelve points. Dotson had five. And Womack had four. So that, I, in a different way confirms.
I know.
How close those two and how much.
And I really, I really, using the same mathematical equation, I really rustled with my two and three, you know, who that second.
Same.
And I almost voted the other way, which would have completely flipped the tables on that by one vote.
Oh, I'm, I'm.
Yes.
Womack and Dotson.
I would like to speak in support of the wise comments from Councilman Gelderlos.
I gotta think out loud more often.
That's right. And I felt the same way. And I think what happens is if, if Durham, for whatever reason, we're not able to come to an agreement with Durham, then you have another conversation here. Hey, are, do we wanna do, offer to either Womack or Dotson? We have another vote at that time or something.
That's so close.
Or do we wanna go back to the well? Which I would consider that too.
We save our no votes.
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it is a motion.
Support.
Did you get all that, Marcy?
It's on the recording.
You'll make it look good in the minutes, I trust.
So I think.
You always do.
Our city attorney has probably got a beautiful motion.
Well, but it's, it's not relevant now because.
Oh, you had a, you had an alternative.
Oh, did you?
So then do we take the league's motion?
Yes.
All right.
I think that's very thorough.
So, okay, so. Let me see, did we have a, yeah, we had a motion. So that would be, to confirm.
Yeah, go ahead.
Confirm that on behalf of the city of Granville, the league facilitator shall extend a conditional offer of employment to Dennis Durham. For the position of city manager. Does that sound right, Jerry? And we got support on that? Okay, Marcy, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Hardest vote in my career here, but yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for being prepared and participating easily. Thank you. Jerry?
So the next step is, uh, to identify who will be the negotiator or negotiators to represent the city in discussions with Mr. Durham. Assuming you wanna move, start moving on this. And I can say this, that, uh, we've already started and are almost through in this background. Uh, and so that part of it in terms of. So, the next step is to identify who will be the negotiator or negotiators to represent the city in discussions with Mr. Durham. Assuming you wanna move, start moving on this. And I can say this, that we've already started and are almost through in this background. And so, that part of it in terms of timing, because that normally takes about three weeks. And because he had, he was the candidate in another community, we've started that. So, that, that part of it is further along than it would be otherwise.
So typically, we make the first move.
And again, I guess I would defer to your, you know, your legal counsel, but yeah, that's typical.
For the woman seeking to fill a position.
Right. So, you're making an offer.
Giving an offer.
Right, you make an offer.
I mean, we haven't discussed at all, we've talked about a range, but
Right. We, we did, you did have a range. That was part of, and it's in, it's in your brochure, that's in your packets.
You haven't seen it for a while, but I'm happy to forward the current agreement to council. So, you've got, I, I think that is a good place to start from. So, if you want that
Right, because we like it already.
You've got what you want theoretically in there, so, yeah.
Jerry, do we know what the offer is for Ionia? I'm assuming that's public since it's
Uh, no, at this point it's not. And I don't. I was not in the middle of that negotiation. I can tell you their salary range is less.
Okay. I'm just saying, if they presented it to him, it becomes public information or not?
Uh, no.
No.
Not until he signs off on it and then it's on the agenda to be approved.
Certainly something that you could ask him about when you're making the first
Yeah, I mean, I'd just be curious.
Right. Yeah, the starting salary range in that position was substantially lower.
The last one made in 102, I looked it up.
Oh, the last, I only administered it.
Last I only administered it.
It was higher. They did, they did raise it.
Okay.
Again, based on my suggestions that, you know, salaries have gone up, but and I guess I would say too, that I'm available if you want, if you want me to ask certain questions in terms of building your offer, I'd be more than happy to, you know, to be that question asker, get the information and funnel it back to whoever is identified as the negotiating person or team. So, I, I'm available. So, if you get questions or information you wanna seek from the candidate, I guess, that's always kind of a balancing act. You have the interest, obviously, of the community and trying to balance the cost, but you also have the interest of the individual you're trying to attract to the community. And so, you know, again, it's, having done a lot of union negotiations myself, if any of you have been involved, you know, you try, you know, the first, you don't wanna, you, and, and this is not an adversarial situation. So, you, you want it to be competitive, you, you have the information about that previously that the league provided. And then, you'll find out if there's anything particular that the individual is going to request after you make a proposal, and they come back with, this is great, and here's a couple of other things I want you to consider. So, I guess if you're interested in me asking what they're interested in additional or consideration for in building your offer, I can do that. And then, get that information back to you before you actually make the actual offer.
I think that sounds like a good approach.
What, what's the timing guy, what do you think? I'm just thinking of the logistics. I mean, how long does this, he's got something going on over in Ionia already.
Well, my assumption there is, and I'm gonna, I guess, if, when I call him, is he's gonna have to decide right now, you know, which one is he going to follow?
Yeah, I mean, do you call on your way home and say?
I will. Yes.
Honestly, yeah.
Yeah. No, I, I try to call most people right away to let them know you're either offered the position or not. One way or another, I communicate with them so they know where they stand. I mean, there's horror stories out there of people who had to read a newspaper, whether, you know, what happened, who got hurt. And, and so, I've always, having been on the other side of this, in terms of being an applicant, real sensitive to keeping everybody informed immediately. So, yes, I'll have that conversation and, you know, we'll know real quickly. And, and again, I can only assume, based on the steps that have come to this point, that this candidate is gonna take the position. That's my assumption. Otherwise, otherwise he would have withdrawn.
So, gentlemen, what do you think? I mean, should we have a closed session soon to talk about, you know, how would we offer? Moving expense, what, what would the salary offer be? I mean
That was my question, but we can't do that, is that correct?
You can do that.
Oh, that's what I was asking. Can you have a closed session to establish parameters for negotiation?
For an employment contract until it's, the offer is made, yes.
Okay.
And then, once the offer's made, it's public?
That's right.
So, we can decide parameters
Offer and accepted?
Just offered. Once you offer it, it's a public document.
Okay.
Well, that's kinda what I just asked about Ionia. Why is that not a public document?
Well, because they took a different approach. And again, I'm not, I don't have a lot of agree. But when you're talking and there isn't anything in writing in terms of salary, nothing's actually been filled in and, and actually agreed to, then, at least my understanding, is that it doesn't need and again, the, the motion that was suggested included the idea, the, the action, that this council would need to approve it. So, it's, it isn't official, doesn't need to be approved, at least in the experience that I've had, where the actual, they, the council has to take a vote on what's offered. It's relayed, because again, every time that changes, are you gonna wanna take a vote? I don't think so. That, that then would call either a special meeting, or you have to wait another week or two, or whatever the case may be. The idea is that the negotiation happens with a subset of maybe, you know, one or two people, and it doesn't actually have to be elected officials if you don't want it to be. It can be the attorney, it can be the, the city manager, whoever. It can be the mayor. But that goes back and forth, and then the, the, the discussion about, well, what are the parameters? It's hard to know until you, you put something out there and you get something back. So, at least what I've seen in the past is that, that initial offer goes, it doesn't, it doesn't see light until there's a, something that comes back, and it goes back and forth. Now, the discussion about, do you want to, you know, where in that starting salary range do you wanna offer? That's something that's, you know, I've seen discussed, you know, in an open meeting. You know, as a starting point, you know, what do you wanna offer? But again, I've, I've seen it, or in some cases, it happens right after this conversation, in other cases, not. So, I'm not privy to all the information that goes on. And in the case of Ionia County, I'm not involved in facilitating that agreement. So, that's why I can, I can honestly say, I don't know what salary they're talking, what, you know, I know the range.
Because otherwise, we'd really be pumping you.
Well, that, no, I mean, it's, I think it's, my guess is that, you know, yours, what you're gonna offer is gonna be more money. Because just, because I know the ranges.
What was their range?
I believe like the high was one, could have been 115, I think, which is actually lower, I think, than your range. Isn't, is, is hi, is lower than the low of your range, their high.
I mean, for us to put out any kind of offer, I think we would need a couple of basic things, and that would be one, and what are we gonna do about moving, and those are the two big ones.
Right.
I know Ken offered up his employment agreement. Does that have the initial offer in it, in there somewhere, deep in the, the agreement of what we did when you were hired, or?
Well, that's a lot. That would be
His most recent one, maybe, as a starting point. What's included in there as far as time off, or as far as
It'd be valuable for us to see that.
And my recollection is that your range was lower than what Ken is making right now, if I remember right.
I, I think, no, I think salary stays as a range. I think there may be a difference in terms of car allowance
Right.
that's on top of that.
Which is another item that, and again, whoever is gonna be the person, the point person, or, or more than one person, will look at that employment agreement because certain things are standard. They don't have to be included, but they generally are included, and you can see, based on Ken's employment agreement, what, you know, what's included.
So, when we say a conditional offer, one of the conditions is that subject to approval by the city council?
Correct.
That's the big
Yes, and agreement, yeah.
And remember, Ken's been here twenty-six years, and so while that might be a starting point, there're gonna be comparisons. And the candidate is gonna vary in terms of qualities compared to Ken. And so, you shouldn't look at Ken's as, you know, floor or a ceiling. It's
Yeah. And we're in an interesting market. I think we did talk about that in the beginning, in terms of limited numbers of people, the salaries increasing, and across a lot of different sectors. But again, I'd be more than happy to help in the process if you thought I was, I could be beneficial.
So, gentlemen, what do you think? I mean, you wanna do a short closed session shortly and come up with a couple? I mean, I, I have a question that I'd like to ask Ken in closed session, and
Could we first maybe establish who is interested in serving on that team? Do that as a motion, and then I agree with the closed motion?
I, I think it could be a pretty short closed session.
Great, great.
I'd rather do it tonight than another night.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't wanna wait two weeks because
I'll go pull that current
Okay. That'd be good.
Can we maybe recess for three minutes or something?
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, so, before we recess or adjourn into closed session, we'll do a council member comments. Jerry, let's start, start here. Unless, Ken, you had anything else?
Only, no, I don't, but I just wanna, you said adjourn, and I just wanna make sure that if there is a thought of a motion when you come back, you're gonna want recess to close session.
Right.
So
Thank you for keeping me.
Council member?
Yeah.
We're still on it.
Oh, okay.
First of all, Deputy Chief, thank you once again for your presentation, your involvement and your dedication to the city and to your personal development. It's pretty awesome to see, and what, what an awesome opportunity. So, again, thank you. Like Randy said, we've, we've faced one of our most probably difficult decisions of our tenure, and, and I haven't been on this council very long, and for Randy to say that, I, I couldn't agree more. We've had a lot of things to discuss that, that are important, but this was a big one. So, I think I wanna further congratulate everybody on their stability in this matter. Like Justin always says, that's something we, we can pride ourselves on, and this is one of those moments I think we can pride ourselves on there. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I just think the process is going really well tonight, so thank all my colleagues, you know, for, for their attentiveness and, and for our, for our ability to reach consensus. I just have a message for the Park and Rec Board, maybe Josh can deliver it. No, 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 no tearing out the tennis court, and definitely not building new horseshoe pits. That's crazy. We are getting rid of like twenty horseshoe pits that we don't need, and gonna keep five maybe, or six where we already have, refurbish those. That makes much more sense than moving them. Obviously, the neighbors don't want that. We are over-tennyst and under-pickleballed in this community. I know why we have too many tennis courts, because of our previous mayor, and that's great. Unfortunately, tennis courts can be stripped for pickleball courts, and pickleball is the thing now. Horseshoes ain't coming back. It's not. Those are my comments.
Yeah, thanks again, Renee. You know, coming in, you were a little apprehensive, and you were a pro. So, that class you took in public speaking, it's changed you. So, it's awesome. So, thank you so much. I learned, I learned a lot, and that's very, very cool for our community. And I, I gotta admit, I was a bit anxious coming in tonight with the whole process and, you know, my love for Ken and, you know, the changes that we have to face. But again, it's, it's just amazing how, you know, we are of like mind, and with minimal discussion, we're able to narrow this down quickly and, and choose a candidate. So, you know, I'm, I'm praying for the best as, as we move forward. But thanks, Jerry, for your, your guidance through this process too, and thanks to all of you for working together tonight.
Yeah, I just will echo those comments made to Deputy Chief Dillman. I really enjoyed the presentation. The extent of my knowledge of Chronicle comes from Criminal Minds, the show, so I just really opened that up quite a bit. I also look forward to Councilmember Truce reelection, over-tennyst, under-pickled campaign, so that sounds like a good campaign slogan. I just wanna say that I, I really appreciated this entire process from start to beginning, or from start to end, and I thank Jerry for all of his contributions, all of the candidates who applied. I think we had some really quality candidates, and that reveals that this is a position that is desired by many highly qualified people. So, that's a great testament to our city. And I just want to extend gratitude to all of the staff who, through the entire process, showed up. It shows how much buy-in there is from the people who work here every single day, that for this decision, they gave up a lot of time, a long time on Saturday. So, thank you to all of you who attended that.
Don't really have anything to add to that, other than I would say ditto, but, and I will definitely take the feedback back to Park and Rec Board.
Yep, and I concur with all your comments, and I do have a set of horseshoes. I'm a little tired, but again, it's good. And thanks for the investment of your time for, for doing that. Appreciate that, because that's quite a commitment. So, thank you.
I'd echo the comments too, Renee. Congratulations. Jerry, thank you for your help, and thank you, gentlemen, especially, for being prepared and taking it seriously. And yeah, it was smoother than I thought the whole process was gonna be. So, thank you. One other thing, I got a brochure. At the, the library in Ada, this Thursday, there's gonna be, a professor and author is gonna give national and international examples of urban waterfront revitalization, to offer insights and opportunities for understanding some of the successful strategies for enhancing waterfront conditions while prioritizing public access. So, that's Thursday, this Thursday, at 6:30 in Ada. If anybody wants to ride along, I'm going. Otherwise, I'll just take it down. So, with that, is there a motion to recess? To close session for the purpose of discussing employment contract?
So, support.
Motion support? Marcy, would you call the rule on that, please?
Councilmember Norwood?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Maringa?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes. Thank you. Sir, yeah, we did that. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for being here, but we're gonna ask you to leave now.